Good evening. This is the special meeting of the Oakley City Council. This meeting is called to order at 5:30 PM. I will now conduct the roll call. Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Fuller?
Here.
Councilmember Meadows?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
And I am Mayor Anissa Williams, present. I did want to let my colleagues up here know that, once again, our buttons are still not working, so we're going to have to do the thing where we raise our hand to be, to get my attention. All right, I am now going to move on to item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. That will be led by Malia Thurber from Summer Lake Elementary School. Please come on up here. Malia lives in Oakley with her sisters, aunt, uncle, and cousins. She is a devoted student and skilled soccer player. In her free time, she loves to read and make bracelets. And her birthday is today, so I think we might do something special at the end for her.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can take a little liberties and if we can sing "Happy Birthday, Everybody", that would be amazing. And then council, I know her family would love a picture with all of us, so after we sing, if we can go down here. It's my last meeting, I can take some liberties, right? All right, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Malia. Happy birthday to you. All right, council, if we can go down and get a picture with her in the front, that would be amazing. Thanks, everyone. I know I would remember that for my birthday. All right, we're moving on to item 2, Public Comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items not on the agenda. We do have cards submitted online, which will be entered into the public record. Please complete a blue speaker card located in the lobby and submit to the city clerk. The time limit to speak is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of my seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will beep once as a reminder to complete comments before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts, so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding public comments. Staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. Seeing no public speaker cards submitted, we'll enter the one that was submitted onto the public record. And we are moving on to item 3, The Consent Calendar. Item 3.1, Adopt a Resolution Accepting the Results of the Canvas of the November 5th, 2024 Consolidated General Municipal Election in Oakley. This will be conducted by Kim Snodgrass, our city clerk. Are there any items that the council would like to pull for discussion? Or is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve this consent calendar.
Here we have, all right, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the item passes unanimously. I am now going to hand over to Vice Mayor Shaw for the presentations.
All right, so we are going to move on to item 4.1, Presentations to Mayor Williams. And we are going to start off with Office of Congressman Mark DeSagne's office. Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Congressman Mark DeSagne's office, I'd like to present Anissa Williams with this certificate of congressional recognition for her outstanding and invaluable work as a mayor to the city of Oakley. We thank you for your service to the city and we wish you the best in the future.
All right, next, we are going to move on to Office of Assemblymember Lori Wilson, Wendy Fabian, Field Representative.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm so happy to be here and honored to be here on behalf of Assemblymember Lori Wilson tonight. She was not able to make it, but I'm happy to be here to present a certificate of recognition from the state of California honoring you for your dedicated service to the people of Oakley, serving them as mayor, and we certainly wish you the best of luck on all of your future endeavors. And please feel free to reach out to us if you ever need anything from our office. And I'll go ahead and take a moment to read it in its entirety, if that's okay. Okay, so I'll have you hold it. And it reads, "Whereas it is with great respect and admiration that we acknowledge the distinguished service of the mayor of Oakley, Anissa Williams, a resident of Oakley since 2014, who began her political journey with a deep commitment to the community by actively volunteering to support local businesses, feeding first responders, and providing essential services to seniors and those with compromised immune systems. And whereas Mayor Williams successfully transitioned from owning a food truck to opening two brick-and-mortar restaurants contributing to the local economy and creating jobs in the city of Oakley. Through her service, it was through her service that she was encouraged to run for city council, where she won the election through a grassroots campaign relying on her strong community connections. As councilmember and mayor, Anissa Williams has championed the revitalization of small businesses by securing grants and funding sources, supporting the growth of nonprofit organizations, and has placed a strong emphasis on enhancing public safety. Under her leadership, the Oakley City Council has taken decisive steps to address safety concerns on East Cypress Road, committing funds for road widening projects to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents of Oakley and in and around the area, as we all know. And whereas Mayor Williams has been a dedicated advocate for accessible public transportation, serving on key boards and commissions including the Tri Delta Transit, the Delta Protection Commission, the Air Land Use Commission, and the Community Development Policy Committee for Cal Cities." Am I missing any? Okay. December 10th, 2024, right now, marks the conclusion of Mayor Williams' impactful career as mayor, fostering growth, safety, and unity across the Contra Costa community and beyond. And now, therefore be it resolved that Assemblymember Lori D. Wilson expresses her deep gratitude and appreciation to Mayor Anissa Williams, Anissa Williams, excuse me, for her exceptional service, tireless dedication, and outstanding contributions to the city of Oakley, bestowed today, December 10th, 2024, here in the city of Oakley. Congratulations.
Next, I would like to invite up from Office of Supervisor Diane Burgess, Peter Meyer, Deputy Chief of Staff.
Okay, one last time this year. Good evening, Mayor Williams. Supervisor Burgess could not attend this evening, but wanted to present this certificate to you. Thank you for your, for your year of leadership as mayor, and we're looking forward to a couple more years at least on the council and continued service to the city of Oakley. So, thank you.
And before we move on to the presentation from city staff, I have one more. So, as most of you may know, Anissa has been working for Senator Glaser for the last few months, more. Yeah, almost a year. And while he would like to be here tonight, he cannot, and I'm not going to have her give herself her own resolution. So, I'm not going to read all the "whereas", as you guys have heard all the amazing things that she's accomplished, but I did want to present this to her on behalf of the senator. All right, staff, you're up.
Well, th- this isn't goodbye, right? This is, this is more of a thank you, because you're going to be seated for another four years. And we, as staff, just want to thank you for the support that you show us on a daily basis, but really how you represent the city. You represent the city with such professionalism, and you served with such grace this year, and you should be really proud of yourself. So, we have a gift for you, for you as mayor, so thank you very much. We have a gift for your husband Brett, some chocolates, right, right? And then we have a gift for your three daughters. Right, and who doesn't like candy? I'm sure they do, so.
What do you say?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, th- thank you very much for the tremendous effort and the time you've given this city, and we look forward to the next four years.
We are going to move on to item 4.2, which is comments by Mayor Williams.
Thank you so much. Former Mayor Aaron Meadows started a great tradition of highlighting all of the things that have been accomplished in the city during his tenure, so I'm going to take a moment to also do that. I never thought that I would be up here, serving people, and I definitely never thought that I would be a mayor. That's just crazy to think about. And so, I just want everybody to realize how impactful and special this was. It literally changed the course of my life, right? I sold my restaurants because I found my passion in being able to help people and make their days better. So, I really appreciate the trust and faith that people put in me for this past year, and that's going to continue no matter what my title is up here. So, all right, I think we'll kick off the year in review. All right, so my 2024 priorities were to work with economic development and the new Chamber of Commerce to attract local, unique, small businesses, and partner with other agencies, nonprofits, to meet the needs of our ever-growing, one-of-a-kind community. I wanted to prioritize affordable housing and bring varied housing products to Oakley that fits the diverse socioeconomic range of our current and future residents. In addition to movie nights, Friday Night Bites, and annual city events like Summer Fest, Oktoberfest, I served with Councilmember Meadows and staff to put on our 25th Anniversary Committee to create fun activities and events to celebrate Oakley's silver anniversary, and it all culminated in our beautiful tree lighting that happened last week. I wanted to continue to prioritize the community's transportation safety by making improvements to East Cypress Road and Laurel Road, which anybody who drives those has seen the work that's been done. And most importantly, one of the things I ran on was funding and designing a library that meets the needs of our growing community of families, students, seniors, and work with community partners to identify and raise funds for a 15,000 to 20,000-square-foot library. And we're close, close to wrapping that project up and figuring out what we can do with the funds that we have. I also wanted to make sure that we have space for our future police officers and the rest of our city as we continue to grow. All right, so some of, here are some of the tangible things that we did this past year. We invested $342,000 through the Facade Fassad and Tenant Improvement Grant to enable seven Oakley businesses to successfully complete construction projects and receive funding. Five businesses also benefited from expert architectural design consultation services. Our Small Business Recovery Grants injected $90,000 across three cohorts in January, May, and September, fueling growth and capital establishment for 41 Oakley businesses, reinforcing Oakley's commitment to a thriving local business community. I wanted to prioritize affordable housing. We have Elm Lane Apartments, also known as Anton Verdian, received final building inspection approvals in February 2024. Complex includes 170 units, 17 of which are deed-restricted for lower-income households for 55 years. The Yellow Roof Foundation on Tequah Drive, which will have its ribbon cutting tomorrow. The city executed a purchase-and-sale agreement with Yellow Roof Foundation in 2022, which acquired surplus property for development of four single-family residential homes, each with an accessory dwelling unit. So, we started with three homes and three ADUs. Homes are near completion, are ready for families. Now, all eight units are subject to an Affordable Housing Covenant, requiring the main homes to be made affordable, available to qualifying moderate, lower-income households, and the ADUs to be made available to qualifying lower-income households. Affordability will remain in place for 55 years. Our Community Development Department approved 11 ADUs in 2024, and city, the city has also made strides to ease the process on ADU applications. We partnered with Diablo Water District to streamline the review process for ensuring adequate water service for new ADUs. We reduced the paperwork requirements from PG&E, making it easier for property owners to navigate the approval process. We collaborated with local title companies to refine communication with prospective ADU builders, enabling them to submit the right paperwork for review more efficiently. In addition to our movie nights, we wanted to conduct a bunch of fun things throughout the 25th, our 25th anniversary. So, as you've all seen, I think, we did the 25, 25th Anniversary Video Series. We had our first Summer Fest parade, grape stomping at Heart of Oakley. And we did carriage rides at the tree lighting, which I know were wildly popular, and we can't wait to improve our holiday presentation next year. East Cypress Road Widening Project, Knights and Avenue to Bethel Island Road, three-phase, multi-year project that will widen the roadway to six lanes west of Jersey Island Road and four lanes east of Jersey Island Road. The project includes storm drain, water, sewer, median islands, landscaping, buffered bike lanes, sidewalks, streetlights, and five signalized intersections. This is a $40 million investment to our roadway infrastructure. Our Phase 1 Capital Improvement Project began in July and is progressing on schedule with completion expected fall of 2025. Phase 2 will be a 10-foot diameter pipe canal undergrounding at Jersey Island, and it began in September, and construction will begin in spring of 2025. Laurel Wide Roadening will widen and improve the final section of Laurel Road, including new curb, gutter, sidewalk, median, streetlights along Laurel and O'Hara, and a new traffic signal on Laurel east of the O'Hara intersection. This was an $800,000 investment to roadway infrastructure. Design was completed this summer, and relocation of the power poles was completed this fall. Construction has been begun and will complement the new Safeway Shopping Center under construction on the corner of Laurel and O'Hara. And a very important project to me, fund and design a library that meets the needs of our growing community. So, here is the money that we've raised so far. I think we have a couple different updates to make to that soon. And we've worked with Contra Costa County. The Friends of the Oakley Library have been instrumental. Oakley senior citizens, veterans of Oakley, and of course, the Rotary Club of Oakley. All right, we initiated a public facilities inventory and needs assessment that will catalog our existing public facilities and discuss space requirements needed as our city grows, including our workforce. All right, our investment in public safety. We hired new Police Services Assistant Bianucci, rehired Officer Soral, hired Officer Gans, and three academy recruits, Pierce, Calgary, and M. Johnson. We are expecting one lateral to be sworn in mid-December and another in January. We trained eight additional officers on how to use the Leica 3D Scanner, which now are integrated with our PD's drones. We certified PD's classes through the California Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, allowing us to train our own people and outside agencies in arrest and control and use of force state-mandated courses. Hosted a multi-day Internet Crimes Against Children operation yielding 11 arrests of suspects who had intended to commit sexually-based crimes against children. And the DA's office went on record to say, "Our operations were the best of this nature ever having been conducted in Contra Costa County." Officers Burton and Horn both accepted as Basic Academy instructors in the fields of patrol tactics and active shooter investigations. This marks the first time that any Oakley employees have been part of the Basic Academy staff. We took delivery of nine new patrol officer rifles and 18 new ballistic helmet, helmets. We ran a fireworks suppression operation, which yielded 14 administrative citations, which is up from the previous year. Officer Radcliffe was sworn in part-time as a deputy US Marshal. Radcliffe and K-9 Harkin became the first US Marshal K-9 team in Northern California. Sergeant Morris became the first Oakley sergeant to graduate the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute. And Sergeant Morris made such an impression on the SBSLI, he was asked to step on as a part-time staff member. PD adopted new seven-point star badges and refreshed their uniforms. All right, some big milestones for 2024. We brought back the Oakley Leadership Academy for the first time since 2019. We fully transitioned now to five city council districts with the 2024 municipal elections for districts 1, 3, and 5. We implemented a new financial software and completed training to-go-live on the HR Payroll Module on January 1st, 2025. And we hired the city's first in-house IT manager and reestablished a full-time chief building official. And we created a city YouTube channel. All right, with all that being said, I thank you all for the past year, and I can't wait to see what Oakley will accomplish. Our Coda Dog Park won some special awards. It was awarded not one but two gold medals for the breast of Oakley, Best Government Spending because of the new shade structures, and Best Place to Walk a Dog. And Oakley was named one of the eight most comfortable towns in Northern California for seniors by WorldAtlas.com. And thank you all for everything, and I know we've got a lot more to accomplish in the next four years. All right, so I think we need to move on to item 5.1, Administration of Oath of Office to Appointed Councilmembers, Aaron Meadows for District 1, Anissa Williams for District 3, and Elected Councilmember George Fuller for District 5. This will be held by Kim Snodgrass, our city clerk.
Thank you. If you could meet me at the podium? If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Anissa Williams.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Sorry, everybody, sorry. All right, we're now moving on to item 6, Reorganization of the Oakley City Council. Item 6.1, Selection of Mayor and Vice Mayor. We will start with an overview of the selection process by Derek Cole, our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, this is the time each year when we reorganize the council. And last year was the final year for our old council selection of its mayor and vice mayor system. That was simply a voting system where, based on a majority of the council, the council selects the mayor and the vice mayor. So, that system, and there's a seniority process that was built into that, and a rotation based on seniority. As the mayor noted, we have transitioned to districts, and now, all five of you have been elected from your districts. So, in this most recent election cycle, districts 1, 3, and 5 ran for the first time, and the council members who won those seats are incumbents, but you have switched from being at-large council members to districted council members. So, what we have done at the council's direction is come up with a system where the mayor and vice mayor are selected based on districts. And we have what I would call a reverse-rotation system. In our ordinance, we started with District 5, and we worked backwards. So, District 5 in 2025 is slated under the code to have the mayor. District 4 is slated under the code to have the vice mayor. And then, each year, we'll work our way down. So, next- So next year, mayor will be four, vice mayor will be three, going all the way down till when we get to District Two as the mayor, District One as the vice mayor, then we go back. And so when District One is the mayor, we go back with District Five as the vice mayor, and we start all over. So there's a five-year rotating process. So we did build in a safeguard. The council was concerned because districts would be running for the first time and not knowing who would win or who would run, that whoever is mayor in the first district to be selected would not be a brand-new council member. In other words, someone who's never held political office. So we have a requirement in our code that whoever is the mayor this year has to have at least three hundred and forty-five days' experience as a council member. So all five of you have that. And so the default at this stage is District Five. District Five will be served by Council Member Fuller, and so Council Member Fuller is slated to become your mayor. District Four is Director, Council Member Shaw. So Council Member Shaw, under this rotation, would be your vice mayor. But it is up to you to vote to make this happen, but that is the default that is built into your code. And so at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is now for you to make your decision.
Just a reminder to my colleagues that we do not have buttons, so you're gonna have to raise your hand. Any questions or Council Member Meadows, are you trying to ask a question? Okay. Okay, are we ready for deliberation?
You should take public comment first.
Oh, sorry, of course, silly me. Actually, didn't we have a public comment on this? We did. Let's see, this commenter did request to have their public, their comment read into the record. They said, "Twenty twenty-four sure flew by. I wanted to say a giant heartfelt thank you to Mayor Williams for all she gave to Oakley this year. She truly walked the whole walk as our fearless mayor and left nothing on the table. Oakley needed exactly who we had at the helm this year, and an early congratulations to our new incoming mayor." Obviously, they didn't know the rotation, but always thankful for their service and dedication to our community, especially when it's not always easy. Anyone who pays attention to meetings and truly cares about Oakley can easily see what a difference they make. The time and energy devoted to advocating for our community is widely appreciated. Ignore the misogynists on Nextdoor, estrogen for the win. Gratitude and cheers to you both. In fact, it's clear that the majority of this council truly has the city's best interests at heart, and hopefully that will be a guiding criteria in selecting the new mayor or vice mayor tonight. Thank you to Oakley's dedicated city manager, our city leadership, and hard-working staff. You are truly doing great things every day with professionalism and teamwork. Be proud of the work you do. It is appreciated. Happy holidays. Again, if you would like to submit a public speaker card, there's blue cards up there. But if anybody wants to make public comment, feel free. Okay, seeing none, now we can move on to deliberation. Council Member Meadows.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Vice Mayor Shaw as our mayor in 2025.
Council Member Meadows, I, so I do, if, if, it's ultimately the council's pleasure. If you do go against the rotation, it's my duty to advise you of what our code says. So our code says that if you have a right as a council to decline to appoint the mayor or the vice mayor who are scheduled to be the mayor and vice mayor, but you need to do so based on six circumstances, and it requires a majority determination. So let me just quickly read those. One of the circumstances is a violation of law or city policy, or there has been or is being investigated for a violation of law or policy. So if the person is, who's proposed to be mayor or vice mayor, is, is under investigation, that's one ground. The other is intemperate, rude, or disparaging remarks or conduct towards the public staff or city council. Ground number three is a lack of leadership or communication skills. Ground number four is excessive absenteeism. Ground number five is any other conduct that would be considered to be unprofessional or unbecoming. And finally, ground six is a determination that the person who is slated to be mayor or vice mayor does not have available time to assume the additional duties that come with their offices. So I just, if it's the council's pleasure to appoint someone or two, two members who are not on the rotation, the default rotation, you need to make a finding, and a majority of you need to conclude that one or more of those six grounds exists.
So I would say it's two, three, and five.
Point of order, people here and people in the community need to hear the words. They don't have any numbers in front of them. If you're going to badmouth me, just be right open and say what your words are.
Sure. Intemperment, rude, or disparaging remarks or conduct towards the public staff or city council, that's two. Three, lack of leadership or communication skills. Five, any other conduct that would be considered to be unprofessional or unbecoming of the position of mayor or vice mayor.
Do we, do we do a second, or like, how does the process work now?
So let me, so Council Member Meadows, are you making a motion to appoint a different council member based on grounds number two, three, and five?
I am.
And then I apologize.
Again, I would make a point of order. If you're going to say two, three, and five, put two, period, and say what it is.
Okay, so Council Member Meadows, you are motioning to appoint Council Member Shaw as mayor, and you are doing so on the grounds that Council Member Fuller should not be mayor under grounds two, three, and five. Ground number two is intemperate, rude, or disparaging remarks towards the public staff or council. Ground number three is a lack of leadership or communication skills. Ground number five is any other conduct that would be considered to be unprofessional or becoming of the position of mayor or vice, or mayor. So have I correctly stated your motion?
You have.
So then it is up to the council to either second and/or vote on that motion.
I'll second. All right, so we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? All right, item passes four-one.
So with the item, you have appointed a mayor, you need to also appoint a vice mayor. So the default, just so you're clear, you can follow the default, but you've just appointed the District Four, who would be the vice mayor by default, so you will need to appoint someone else. One thing I do need to-
We can take those separately, can't we?
Yes, you can, you can make a separate motion. One thing I do want to put onto the record is in the code section that we are dealing with is Section 2.1.003, and referring to Paragraph F. I just want to put on the record that the appointment of any member that deviates from the default rotation does not reset the rotation next year. So next year, so this year is five-four. Even with the action you're taking tonight, next year, unless you choose otherwise, it will be four-three, and that is built into our code. So I just want to make sure council knows that as a placeholder for your deliberations next year.
Okay, so now we can make a motion to appoint the vice mayor, though.
Yes, you do need to specify a ground for why you're not appointing, but-
Are we gonna do the mayor first?
Well, you've already, you've already appointed the mayor.
We appointed the mayor.
So you need to appoint a mayor, so I, I mean, this is a little bit of an unusual situation, but I believe ground number six, a determination that the person does not have the available time to assume the additional duties. I think you could construe that to mean if they're already the mayor, they can't be the vice mayor. But this is a little bit of a wrinkle that maybe, I apologize, I didn't take care of drafting last year when I wrote this ordinance for you.
Okay, so basically, at this point, we would just say that we're not appointing her as the vice mayor because she was just appointed the mayor, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's your pleasure.
So since we did that, do I hand the meeting over for the appointment of the vice mayor, or do I still conduct right now?
You're still conducting because we haven't completed the item.
Perfect, okay, great. All right, so I guess it's time to appoint a vice mayor. Do we need to take public comment separate since we separated the items, or did we do that at the-
I think you should do that.
Excuse me, did we say that the mayor's going to appoint, or Ms. Williams is going to appoint the vice mayor?
No, we are taking public comment, and then it's, it would be subject to a motion and a vote by the council to appoint the vice mayor.
All right, is there anybody in the public besides my child who wishes to speak? All right, sound, seeing none, I think it's time to start our deliberation. I would like to, since we've already sort of changed the order, my wish is to appoint Hugh Henderson as the vice mayor, and I know if we had followed some sort of thing, I would be in line to it, but I'm gonna say that I can't do it to item six, which means I don't have enough time to take on that responsibility at this moment, so I would like to appoint Hugh Henderson as the vice mayor. Second. Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? All right, passes four-one, congratulations. Now I get to turn it over to our newly-appointed mayor, Shannon Shaw.
All right, so we are going to move on to item 6.2, which is the Administration of Oaths of Office to the newly-appointed mayor and vice mayor. Okay, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Shannon Shaw.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
All right, so comments by the newly-appointed mayor. If you guys will give me a few minutes, I would like to say a couple of things. It is with deep gratitude and a strong sense of responsibility that I am before you today, ready to serve as your mayor for the upcoming term. I take this responsibility with the utmost seriousness, and I'm genuinely excited to embark on the journey with all of you. I want to thank the council for placing, for placing your trust in me, and it is an honor and a privilege, and I promise to dedicate myself to make Oakley a place where every resident feels heard, valued, and supported. I would like to acknowledge the exceptional leadership of our past mayors, Anissa Williams and Erin Meadows. Their dedication has laid the foundation for the exciting developments we see today, and I look forward to build on their work as we continue to move Oakley forward. From both, I have learned invaluable lessons about the importance of listening to the community, staying true to our values, and making decisions that prioritize the long-term well-being of our residents. As I step into this role, I carry their wisdom with me. Oakley is a city full of promise with a strong and resilient community ready to tackle the challenges and opportunities ahead. From our vibrant neighborhoods to our growing businesses, Oakley's spirit is one of unity and hard work. We are a community that values connection, and that spirit will guide us as we enter this next chapter. As we look ahead, we can be proud of the progress that we've made. Our strategic plan is already midway through its implementation, and we have made significant strides towards our goals, but there is still much to do. The path ahead is filled with new challenges, and I am confident with continued collaboration and hard work, we will continue to make Oakley a place residents are proud to call home. And Oakley is growing, and we are excited, we are in an exciting position to build on that growth. We will continue to foster the expansion of local businesses, attract new investments, and ensure our infrastructure keeps up with the pace of our population. But our growth will always be guided by a commitment to preserve Oakley's unique charm and to ensure that progress benefits everyone. One key partnership I'm excited to continue is with the Oakley Unified School District. Our joint-use agreements for school parks will create more recreational opportunities for students and the wider community, enhancing family connections. Additionally, we are moving forward, placing a school resource officer at our middle schools. This initiative will not only ensure our children's safety, but also provide positive mentorship and support. We've been making significant progress improving our city's infrastructure. As a part of our commitment to transparency, we are upgrading our city hall technology, including a much-needed website overhaul. These updates will make it easier for residents to access information and engage with the city, ensuring that we will remain an open and accountable government. I'm also proud of the steps that we've taken to support our seniors. We've been working closely with the Oakley Senior Club, and in two, in 2025, we will transition senior programming to city-run services. We'll be offering a range of activities and resources to keep our seniors healthy, engaged, and connected. This is an important milestone to ensure all residents, regardless of age, have the support that they need to thrive here in Oakley. We will also be revamping a space at the Oakley Recreation Center for seniors to gather and continue their club activities. We hope to expand our lunch services from one day a week to four days a week in 2025. Looking ahead, there are several exciting projects on the horizon that will improve our infrastructure and quality of life. We are thrilled to see the construction of the new shops at Laurel Field, which will include a long-awaited Safeway and additional retail options. These shops will bring greater convenience for families, support our local economy, and create many jobs. We are also looking forward to the construction of our new library and community center. This expanded facility will offer modern amenities, a welcoming environment, and will serve as a hub for learning, culture, and community engagement for all ages. Another exciting development is the new train platform, which will improve transportation options, increasing connectivity to the Bay Area, and promote sustainable transit. This will provide a seamless connection between Oakley and the greater region. Additionally, the continued widening of East Cypress and Laurel Roads will improve traffic flow, reduce congestion, and enhance safety for everyone. These upgrades will support our community's growth and make it easier for residents to get where they need to go. These projects represent our commitment to build a stronger, more connected, and sustainable future. By 2025, we will see the tangible results of these efforts, ensuring our community thrives for generations to come. None of this would be possible without the support of our council, our city staff, and our community. I want to take a moment to specifically thank our city staff. Oakley is fortunate to have such dedicated public servants who work tirelessly, tirelessly for our residents. Our staff does an incredible job despite being a small team. Their ability to manage a large and diverse workload is nothing short of remarkable. Their commitment to delivering results, often under tight timelines, is the backbone of everything we accomplish, and I am grateful for their hard work, creativity, and the passion that they all bring. There are a few additional projects I hope to bring forth in 2025. I would like to work to find a suitable location for a police substation. Our police department is growing, and we are running out of space, but our community is also growing, and we want to ensure that we have enough officers to continue providing the excellent service that our residents expect. Mental health is also a pressing issue for all communities, and I am committed to collaborating with the county, neighboring, and the neighboring cities to expand mental health services in Far East County. This will include increasing counseling services, offering more community-based programs, and working to reduce the stigma that often prevents people from seeking help. Everyone deserves the opportunity to live a healthy, balanced life, and that begins with the right support system. Over the past few years, I have been working to develop strong relationships with elected officials across the state, Congress members, senators, assembly members, county supervisors, and other council members. As a member of the Policy Committee for Public Safety and the, and a board member on the California League of Cities East Bay Division, I have ensured that Oakley has a seat at the table when key decisions are being made. Oakley may be young, and we may be the youngest city in Contra Costa County, but we will make sure that we are seen and heard and never overlooked. As your mayor- As your mayor, I am committed to continuing our momentum and building on the progress that we have made. There is much work ahead, but together we can continue to shape Oakley into a city where families can grow, businesses can thrive, and our community will remain a shining example of collaboration and progress. But none of this is possible without all of you, the residents of Oakley. I want to hear from you. I want your ideas, your concerns, and your visions for our future. We just closed out celebrating 25 years, and I'm looking forward to starting the next 25. So I will look, I look forward to working with all of you in the year ahead, and thank you. There will be a reception in the lobby after this special meeting adjourns, and the regular meeting will begin at 6:30 this evening here in the council chambers. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.
You have the biggest fan club ever.
I know, I know. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm gonna have to call you senior mayor or...
Hugh works.
Hi.
Hit her with it.
Alexi, Alexi got this.
Can I hold it?
There we go.
Let me get a picture, let me get a picture.
That's your mile. Get in the foot. There we go. You gotta use it in the chamber.
Todd Lee, put your sign away.
You may are ready to rule. There you go.
I asked to hold it first.
Yes, yes.
Shannon.
Yeah. No, no, you can't do that right now. You can't do that right now.
Yeah.
You can't do that right now.
All right, are you fine with not being first husband anymore? Or second husband, even?
Pledge of allegiance for mommy. I don't want to get out of here. The pledge of allegiance is at 5:00. It's at 6:30. 6:30 is five minutes away.
Nelson? There isn't, we can ask. Ask Mayor Shaw, she will allow it. Okay. Her granddaughter might want to do it. Where is my name tag now? Okay, that's.
Right there. Everybody smile.
Thank you, I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Oh Brett, can I? She said, "Oh, hello."
Something came along.
Hello. Shannon Shaw is your favorite person. Can I do the pledge of allegiance? Uh, I don't even know if they have somebody lined up for it. We do not. My mother told me to ask. Since you are now the mayor.
When did they change?
I don't know, they changed it before.
Oh my god.
They can't even lock your name.
No, we.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll get ready to go. The top for the caramel is no high risk. It's caramel or the brownies. Is the girl who did the pledge of allegiance, is she gone already? Um, I think so. I don't see her. Her birthday is today. Yeah, that's how I have my birthday. Yeah. And then you'll need to sign the chapter. Well, actually, why not you? I can find you, Gavin, you're MIA. They'll need to be done completely, maybe. Hey, Hugh, that's not your seat anymore.
So somebody didn't have it like.
So I was hoping, sir, I thought I was gonna have there so I could have my heater.
You don't know how far to move it. Well, you can't move it because look at.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, we need to find council number Fuller.
He went outside. Here's your water.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is the regular joint meeting of the Oakley City Council. Oakley City Council acting as the successor agency to the Oakley Redevelopment Agency, Oakley Public Finance Authority. This meeting is being called to order at 6:38. Sorry, my clock's an hour off. And I will do roll call. Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Henderson.
Here.
And I am Shannon Shaw, your mayor. And we are going to move on to, I just wanted, oh, sorry, a quick reminder that our speaker buttons are not working. If you wish to speak, please let me know by either raising your hand or getting my attention, and you will be called upon. We are going to go to item 1.2, which is the pledge of allegiance. And in honor of our outgoing mayor, Anissa Williams, I'm going to have her children come lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Before we move on to item 1.3, we are going to be pulling item 6.1 ahead and moving on with that, which is consideration of a resolution accepting the annual comprehensive financial report, memorandum of internal control, required communications, and report on agreed-upon procedures for fiscal year 2023-2024, presented by Jerry Tejada, Administrative Services Director, and Amy Meyer, CPA, Mays &amp; Associates.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council. Tonight, our report will be given by Amy Meyer, our independent auditor from Mays &amp; Associates. So I just wanted to introduce her and turn it over to her. I'll be available for questions at the end if there are any.
Good evening, mayor and council members. And you can ask questions along the way. I tend to talk too fast, so please feel free to ask any questions along the ways you go, and I'll jump right in here. So we have, tonight we have five reports to present to you. And an audit is an independent verification that the city's financial statements are materially correct or fairly present the financial position of the city's funds. So we opine on the city's basic financial statements, which are included in the annual comprehensive financial report, which is one of the attachments that you see in the agenda packet, the main, the main report, the main reason we're here tonight. We opine on the financial statements as a whole. They are contained in the middle of the annual comprehensive financial report. It's, the basic financial statements are in the middle. It's preceded by an introductory section, and on the back end is the statistical information. So the basic financial statements are that, the main guts, that start with our audit opinion and end with the combining statements in the back of the report. So we opine on the financial statements as a whole, which can be found on pages 16 and 17 of the report. When I give you the page references, I'll give you the report page references, but then also the PDF if you have it on your screen. So 16 and 17, or 38 and 39 of the PDF. That shows, that's the statement of, excuse me, statement of net position and statement of activities that show all of the city's information combined into the one column for governmental activities for the city. All of your assets, all of your liabilities, everything combined together, citywide as a whole. So we opine on that as a whole. And then we opine on what are called major funds individually and non-major funds in aggregate. Major funds are determined, there's a mathematical calculation that goes in to tell the city which funds are required to be reported as major. And then the city can elect to include other funds if, if they, you know, if you think that they're gonna come in and out of major and non-major, depending on the activity for the year. And we opine, again, opine individually and then non-major funds as a whole. And the detail for the non-major funds is found in the back of the report in the supplementary schedules. So major funds can be found on pages 20 and 21, or 42 and 43 of the PDF. The general fund always has to be a major fund. That is your main fund of all of the activities, and it, there's no mathematical calculation for the general fund. It has to be reported as major, but it's always gonna qualify by the way the math works. So our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing. works. So our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as government auditing standards. So we audit, again, the city as a whole, a little bit of a broken record there, annual comprehensive, in the annual comprehensive financial report. And then we also would, normally, we've spoken about a single audit in the past, but the city did not expend more than $750,000 in federal funding, or, excuse me, you did spend more than fifty, excuse me, misspoke. You do, did spend more than $750,000 in federal funding, primarily the ARPA funding that was spent during fiscal twenty-four, but that audit has a different deadline, which is March thirty-first of twenty-five, so that work will happen, you know, in late December, early January, and we'll report on that separately later. So the city received an unmodified or clean opinion that can be found on page one of the report or page twenty-three of the PDF. That's the highest level of assurance we can, we can provide. Included in the report after our audit opinion is management's discussion and analysis. So we prepare the financial, we compile the financial statements based on the general ledger data from the city. But the city staff prepares the management's discussion and analysis. And it's a really good place to start, to look at the activity for the year compared to the prior fiscal year, to see what happened, what changed, why, and to give you a good overview of the report as a whole. Of course, as your auditor, I want you to read the whole report, but I understand that's, you know, you wanna start there at that, that report itself. So major events during the fiscal year. The general fund fund balance increased $7.1 million at fiscal year-end. That was a combination of two main things that caused that increase. One is a reduction or a lower amount of transfers out for projects. You didn't have that, you know, you did pre-funding of projects in fiscal twenty-three, didn't have that same level, nine and a half million dollars last year, didn't have that level this year. So that is the main reason for the increase in fund balance. And the other is, is interest income of all things, because interest rates increased during calendar twenty-four, and at the end of the fiscal year, you saw that increase with the increase in fair value of your investments adjustment at the end of the year. Interest income increased from 1.1 million to 2.2 million. The emergency reserve in the general fund, which the balance is 8.1 as of June thirty twenty-four, was fully funded, and you can see that in the report as well. We've talked the last couple of years about the pension liability, because there's been, been a big swing in the balance of your net pension liability. I'm hoping that the pendulum has stopped swinging, but you never can tell, because it's also highly reliant upon the investment returns and results that CalPERS experiences. So this year, it increased only 1.2 million dollars after some significant swings in the last couple of years. And your ARPA funding this year, you still have, this is the last, this twenty-five will be your last year for spending. The ARPA funding has to be spent or committed by twelve thirty-one twenty-four. So during fiscal twenty-four, you spent an additional 2.3 million dollars, and there's still 7.2 million dollars left in the funding at June thirty twenty-four. So as part of our audit, we also test the internal controls of the city to verify that day-to-day practices are in line with approved policies and record, transactions are recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that means on a sample basis, we trace transactions to source documents for areas including revenue, disbursements, payroll, capital assets, and long-term debt. So we also, and then we also test the year-end balances on the balance sheet and the statements of net position. So from that work, if there are matters to report, they're included in our memorandum on internal control that's included in your report packet as well. And there are three categories that items can be included in: material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and other matters. So we have no material weaknesses to report, and I'm happy to report that this year, if you remember last year, we had some significant deficiencies to report last year, and those are included in the report, but they're in the prior year section with the current status of significant deficiencies. And they were all implemented during fiscal twenty-four or cleared, so they were not considered significant deficiencies in fiscal twenty-four. And then we had, so we had no new other matters, again, those three categories, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and other matters. No new other matters to report in the current year, other than new governmental accounting standards board pronouncements that are going to affect the financial statements in the future, but not today, just as a heads up. And of the other, other matters that are in the back of the prior year status of other matters, there was only one that's hanging on from the prior year, and it's a really minor issue related to, what's, we're valuing it dedicated, developer dedicated infrastructure and how that process is done. So there's no, I'm happy, it was a huge swing or huge improvement from twenty-three to twenty-four when it comes to the memorandum on internal control. Then also in your packet is the required communications document, so there are certain matters that we are required to communicate to you, whether there are any changes in accounting policies, which there were none during fiscal twenty-four. There were two new governmental accounting standards board pronouncements that came into effect during twenty-four, but they didn't affect the financial statements this year. There were no unusual transactions during twenty-four. And then significant estimates. The financial statements include a number of significant estimates, because that is that frozen point in time at June thirty twenty-four with all of the activity up to that date, and certain items have to be estimated as of June, as of June thirty. And so we have to point out the significant estimates, because the reality or the actual activities in the future could vary from those estimates. The main areas with, of estimates include fair value of investments, because as we know, that changes from day to day and moment to moment. And then net pension liability and related balances, because that changes, you know, any little change in, again, CalPERS results or benefits that the city, that may change in the future, or change in employee count and things like that can change that liability. Cumulated depreciation on capital assets, compensated absences balances, and then leases receivable and the related balances related to that. So there were no material audit adjustments this year. That's another significant improvement from twenty-three to twenty-four. We only had a few audit adjustments or post-closing adjustments in fiscal twenty-four compared to the significant number in fiscal twenty-three. And there were no, we have no uncorrected misstatements to report to you. So during our audit, if there are some minor little differences that we find, we have to accumulate them and make sure that they don't become material or something that needs to be adjusted. And those were deemed trivial. We had no disagreements with management, and we're happy to, to report that. And then one of the other reports in your packet is a new report for this year, which is the agreed-upon procedures related to the investment policy. That was in the prior year recommendations, because the city included a provision, its investment policy, to have the auditors do some procedures. So we were engaged to do so this year, and that you see that report there, included in the packet as well. We only had one exception related to a checklist that the city hasn't yet developed related to the, to the investment policy. That, so that will be, city staff will, will deal with that issue and implement something related to it as well. And so I do wanna thank the finance department and, I'm gonna mess up our title again, the Administrative Services Director, I couldn't remember her title at all last year, because it changed during the year, the Administrative Services Director and her team for, for a successful audit this year and all of their help, because we ask a lot of questions and ask for a lot of documentation during our audit. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any council questions of staff?
Questions? Yes. Can you go over again the increase in money that we have over our balance and...
Sure, specifically to the general fund? Yes.
Yes.
The general fund results, you can see those on page, let's see, I think it's page...
Which I had right here.
I don't have the PDF page in front of me, but it's page twenty-four of the report, is the income statement for the general fund. So you can see the, the fund balance increased 7.1 million dollars. So it was primarily the, I'm gonna call it, even though the general fund doesn't have operating income, but generally, the operating income from twenty-three to twenty-four was similar, but transfers out, which are below that, were much less in twenty-four than they were in twenty-three. And so with that eight, eight million dollars of, of operating income was not offset by nine and a half million dollars as it had been in the year before. So that's, you know, there were transfers out to their capital projects funding.
Okay, I, in doing so, I read a line where you said that the revenue was less than expenditures. Can you explain that one?
Revenue was less than, probably related to the budget, let's see. I don't know if that was, must've been in the management's discussion and analysis, maybe? Do you remember?
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
Maybe during the, in the management's discussion and analysis, possibly? Let's see. Because revenues...
No, it was a synopsis of the...
Of the general fund?
Assets and expenditures, but...
Let's see.
If you, I, I don't need the exact figures, but I'm curious what, what you were referring to.
Uh, it might've been, is it possible, let me read this sentence and see if this is the one you're referring to. General fund revenues were 2.1 million dollars more than budgeted, expenditures were 3.8 million less than budgeted? Was it that one?
Yeah.
Maybe? Yeah. So if you look on page twenty-seven, you'll see that it's actually, it's actually a good, good result. So budgeted revenues were twenty-three million, excuse me, budgeted revenues were expected to be 20 million dollars, but you actually brought in 23 million dollars during the year. The amounts in excess of budget were primarily in interest income, because interest rates, the interest rates went up during the year, so your investment income increased significantly, plus the fair value adjustment, which is that difference between the cost and what the market value is at June thirty, that gets recorded in the financials as well, and so that was, came in as, at a larger number than was expected in the budget. And then the, on the other side, on the expenditure side, you had expected to, to spend 18.6 million dollars, but only spent 14.7 million dollars in the general fund. So there's your savings, so you have that savings there.
Which brings me into my next question. Yes, we had seventeen million unassigned funds, a little over seventeen million unassigned funds. Is that part of that four million that we, that we, that you just mentioned?
Probably mathematically, I think it probably does fall to there. Let me see, let me find that schedule. Yeah, 'cause there, yeah, the nine and a half million dollars of the unassigned fund balance in the general fund would be a factor of the, of the revenues exceeding the expenditures there.
Okay. The fiduciary trust was another one. The, we're, we're, I don't wanna say stockpiling, we're putting aside funds for depreciation to replace funds. I was, the one thing I, I mentioned when we approved it, and I still go in there, that they're fiduciary funds, that if we suddenly find that we have an emergency, we're not bound to keep that there. We can move into those fiduciary funds and replacement another time, if I'm not mistaken.
Sure.
I believe you're referring to our internal service funds for fleet and for facilities and IT expenditures. And yes, those are items that we are budgeting for every year, but it's also money that is coming from the general fund, so it remains general fund money. And if emergencies came up and the council as a whole decided they needed to move those for something else, it would be available to move.
Okay. And then this was not an absolute report. It was, how'd you put, how'd you term it? Term it? It's not an absolute...
Correct. Auditors, we're never gonna, auditors are never gonna speak in absolutes, because we're not testing 100% of transactions. We're selecting transactions. There are audit standards that we have to follow that tell us, you know, what our sample sizes need to be and, you know, what, what we need to look at to make certain conclusions with the report. But you're right, we're never gonna talk fairly stated, reasonable assurance, but never absolute. We're never gonna speak in those terms.
Okay, good. The traffic fund showed a little over 13 million dollars in place. Is that money available to spend?
No, that'll be restricted. Well, it's available to spend on traffic projects, but it's restricted.
So we ended the year with the 13 million dollars, but if you look at the budget for the current year, that money has been assigned to be spent already.
Okay, and the same one under parks. Now going down through the parks, the sign, sign money actually is only, I think, 13% completed, or a small number, but then Rico's in Queenie Park at 4.9 million dollars allocated.
The park impact fee ended the year with a 6 million dollar...
Right, right, the number three, the third document. There was the staff report, year report, and then the third one was the impact fees. And...
That's a separate agenda item that will come later on consent. That's our AB 1600 report.
Okay. I, in that, oh, you're absolutely right. I'm sorry, it's under the consent calendar. My apologies, right. So, back to, and I'll ask, I'll ask at the time whether that money can also go to the Civic Center Park, since the Civic Center Park is a park. I think, overall, I think it was a great budget. I'll discuss it, I mean, a great audit, but I will discuss it after everybody else has a question.
Any...
Just to make sure, I'm sorry, the police department did not expend all the money that was budgeted to them. Did you find the reason for that?
No.
It was about 1.2 million dollars.
Most of it was in salaries. So we still have some vacant positions in the police department.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? And I do not have any public speaker cards on this item. If you would like to submit a public speaker card, please fill out a blue form in the lobby and bring it to the front. And unless there's anybody urgently wanting to speak on this, I will close this to, back to deliberation to the council.
May I discuss it? Okay, yes, number one, and room numero six, and I was very pleased, and yes, it's much easier to read. It's very concise as to what, but easy to follow through. I appreciate that. I think that's, it is an improvement over last year. I think a significant improvement over last year. I was glad to see, no, there were no significant deficiencies and such that were there. I kept reading the audit report, and there were no issues that you found with management. Management was able to answer all your questions and deal with them. So that was good. I'm always glad to hear that we have an increase in funds over balance with a decrease in expenditures below balance. So that's always a, a nice one to go there. And the rest of it I'll talk about in the parks. I think, I think overall, yes, I walked away with a pretty knowledgeable part, at least for me and where we are financially, which is seems pretty sound. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I move approval of this item.
Second?
Approval or acceptance?
Acceptance.
Acceptance. I'll move, oh, second acceptance for the article.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are going to go back now in regular order, and we are going to go to item one point three, which is Contra Costa County Fire Protection District update, Assistant Fire Chief Scott Wannamaker, as well as Jan Burris.
Good evening. My name's Jan Burris. I'm the Battalion Chief of the EMS Division for Contra Costa County Fire Protection District. As you see, Chief Wannamaker is in the back, and I'm gonna be giving the presentation on behalf of both of us. Let me just, I've heard this is challenging, so I wanna make sure. Down moves it. Okay, there we go. All right, I'm, I'm sure you've heard and seen some of these slides before, but they're in there as a, as a refresher. Here's a map of Contra Costa Fire as it exists now. As you can see, we go as far east as Discovery Bay and Station Ninety-Five, which is in East Oakley. We go all the way along the water, all the way to West County, as far west as San Pablo. And then we have most of Central County, south, all the way down to Walnut Creek. So there's a, there's a map of what we're, what we're discussing as a whole when we come to Contra Costa Fire totality. So ConFire at a glance, we have over 600 employees, including firefighters and civilian staff. We have thirty-five stations within the district that we just saw on that map prior. They're strategically placed over the 553 square miles. We have a very large apparatus fleet. We have dedicated administration, training fleet. We have our own comm center. We have wellness facilities, Fire Prevention Bureau, Fire Investigations, hand crew, wildland firefighters. And we basically prevent all hazards, full-service fire district, which I'm sure you know and have seen in, in prior presentations. So 2024, the district accomplishments. We did a lot this year, as, as you did as well in the city that we, that we saw. We graduated seventeen recruits from our, our Fire Academy on Treat Boulevard in Concord. Thirteen of those were our own employees that we graduated. We also collaborated with Maraga Renda and agreed to train or send four of their new employees through our Fire Academy, which is, which is state-approved. So we worked with a good partner, a neighboring agency, and got some of their recruits... we worked with a good partner, a neighboring agency, and got some of their recruits through Firefighter One Academy. We added two new fire trucks to the fleet, and seven new fire engines were put into service throughout the district. Most importantly to you and locally here, both Engine ninety-five and Engine ninety-three got brand-new Type One fire engines. Ninety-three got a Pierce Velocity, and ninety-five got a Pierce Enforcer. The difference between those two is they're both Type One engines. Ninety-three mirrors what most of the district uses for a Type One fire engine. And it carries five hundred gallons of water, but ninety-five has the Pierce Enforcer, and there was some forethought there to get a Type One engine that carries seven hundred and fifty gallons of water in its tank out to the east side of Oakley where some of the more challenging water supply issues are for us. So there's more water out there offhand initially, so that's good. We, we opened the Byron Wildland Training Center out in Byron, and that houses Crew Twelve, which is a, mostly a seasonal group of individuals that do vegetation firefighting. They cut lines, and they, they mitigate hazards when they're not outrunning wildland fire calls. We added a seasonal aerial firefighting helicopter. It was added somewhat late in the season, but it still completed six missions. One of those missions was an assisting, a water rescue out in the Delta. The other five were water drops on vegetation fire incidents. In the five incidents that they went on, they dumped over seven thousand gallons of water to help with the vegetation fires. As, our organization as a whole recognized the effectiveness and need of DEI training. We implemented that in twenty twenty-four, and every single one of our employees went through DEI training to improve our workforce. In Oakley specifically, we did eighteen state fire marshal mandated inspections from our Fire Prevention Bureau. So, so those are some of the highlights through twenty twenty-four. As far as call volume and call type, I would have liked to give you more of a year review. We're still missing two months of, of call data to kind of give you that, even though we're pretty close to the end of the year. So next time I show up, or Chief Wannamaker, we hope to give you a year in review for call specifics. But as a district, we ran in October, this is October specific, we ran eleven thousand two hundred and seventeen calls. You can see somewhat of the breakdown of some of the major ones, obviously EMS, five thousand four hundred, and, and some more EMS component ones. You have thirteen structure fires within the month, sixteen vegetation fires. Vegetation fires are still happening in October, and with the intermittent rain, there's, there's still a small risk for some vegetation fires still today. More specifically to the city of Oakley, which is, you're more interested in. Of those eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-three calls for service within the, the city limits of Oakley, there were thirteen reported structure fires. On ten eleven, off Longhorn, there was the one working structure fire, which was a garage fire. And while I was looking this up, I also noticed that within the month of November, there were two additional structure fires. One off Quail, Quail Valley Run, there was a garage fire that extended into the attic, and on eleven fourteen on Cypress Road, there was a band, an abandoned home that caught fire. I'm not sure you're aware of. Additionally, there was three rescues in the city of Oakley, reported rescues. I looked those up. There was, on October twelfth off East Cypress, there was a vehicle accident with rescue with two patients. One of those patients was flown via helicopter to the trauma center. So those were some of the, the more significant calls within the city limits of, of Oakley. Here, once again, is just a break, a little quick there. As you know, as you well know, Contra Costa Fire has an alliance model for ambulance transport as we, we partner with AMR. And within the month of October, there was twenty-four hundred ambulance-only calls, several of which were in Oakley, but that slide is just to highlight that. Here is a state responsibility area. I, I believe Chief Wannamaker is, is covered this with you in the past, that Oakley does not lie in a state responsible threat, high-threat area. The closest one would be out on Marsh Creek. October was disaster preparedness. Contra Costa Fire marked that occasion by reviewing our policies. All of quarter four, training was focused on disaster preparedness. Our POs got, PIOs got public messaging out. Our Public Education Division, along with on-duty crews, went out to schools and, and participated in National Shakeout. And last, last week, we had the community warning device went off, which was a good dry run as there was no tsunami in Contra Costa County, but it was, it was nice to check our readiness, our recall, and feel confident that we're prepared if a more likely disaster comes our way. That is it? That's all I have prepared? Are there any questions?
Councilmember Fuller?
Oh, sorry, that's, sorry.
Our new mayor.
We don't have buttons up here, so see there. Can you go back to the maps, the first one, the stations?
Sure.
Just to make sure. But I see off in the northeast corner, ninety-five, which is, my understanding is O'Hara. Ninety-three is, looks like, is that on, where, where are we seeing right off of Main Street, ninety-three?
I, I do not know the specific street it's on. It is right in downtown.
Reason I'm asking is, I'm thinking that fifty-five goes where ninety-five is, and ninety-five goes, ninety-five goes to where ninety-three is. Ninety-three is not built yet. We're still one station we're still in discussion with, or planning, or buying the land, or something.
I think there is a, I don't know specifically where the future of additional stations are going in East County, but I know there is discussion and land acquisition in East County specifically.
I know the one in Brentwood. Maybe the city manager can help. Are we gonna have three stations in Oakley, or two, two and a half?
You know, with the two existing, I believe there's a plan for a third one in Oakley. I just don't think the location is, is known yet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson?
You refer to the, the green spots on the map, those are proposed stations for Contra Costa Fire in the future.
Just for a point, point of clarity.
I didn't hear, I understand that.
The, the fire station that we're currently working on, putting together is, is in Brentwood, and we do have a location identified off of Lone Tree over by Winco. Right now, we don't have any stations that we are nearing, have plans for the city of Oakley.
Seems like when we did the merger, there was a talk, and I agree, there's nothing now, but there's a talk of putting a station off of Live Oak over by the Four.
Yeah, currently, we just have the one here in downtown on O'Hara, and the, the station out towards Bevel Island on East Cypress. Those are the only two that we have currently.
Maybe Councilmember Henderson or Vice Mayor Henderson can tell me, what they, what do you mean by the light green?
I, it's a little hard here on mine, but there are, in, on that map, you can see, I believe, ninety-four, eighty-nine, and ninety are on there, and they are placeholders for potential new stations in the area. And those, as, as you probably well know, with a county, district, those stations would respond into Oakley on any, on any major incident, or even if, say, ninety-three was just down the street on a medical, and, and ninety was the closest, they would come in and support. So they may not be specifically located in, in Oakley, in the city of Oakley, but they would respond into Oakley.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilmember Meadows?
Are you guys looking at annexing Rodeo Hercules?
That is in a process. I believe it is at LaFco right now.
I believe they approved the SOI, Spear of Influence. So that's in the works, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
All right, we are going to move on to item one point four, followed by one point five, which are proclamations, so I will head down to the front. One point four is proclamation honoring Logan Pope for achieving Eagle Scout, Boy Scouts of America, Troop Ninety. Whereas the city of Oakley, a place for families in the heart of the Delta, takes pride in its sense of community and citizen involvement. And whereas the vision of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare every single eligible youth in America to become responsible, participating senior citizens and leaders who are guided by the Scout oath and law. And whereas Logan Pope is a member of the Boy Scout Troop Ninety and achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and whereas this is the highest award a scout can receive. Few scouts move up through the ranks of scouting, and only about two percent of scouts make it all the way to Eagle. And whereas Logan's Eagle Court of Honor will be held on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, and whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourage Eagle Scout candidates to complete a worthy project to improve their neighborhoods, their community, and the region. And whereas, for his community service project, Logan used his skills to lead a large group of volunteers to design and build a food storage box for the Santa Clara Police Officers Association campground to prevent the negative effects of wild animals eating human food. And whereas Logan has been part of scouting since the age of eight, has earned thirty-eight merit badges, is a member of the Order of the Arrow and Wolfboro Pioneers. He has held several leadership positions, which include patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, senior patrol leader, and currently serving as troop guide in Troop Ninety. And whereas Logan is a true outdoor scout, he has a hundred and fifteen nights of camping, over a hundred and fifty miles hiked, and seventy miles backpacked, and he has over a hundred and sixty-nine hours of community service. And whereas Logan has excelled in all facets of, facets of life, however, his main focus has always been faith, school, athletics, and scouting. And whereas Logan is currently a junior at Heritage High School, after high school, he plans to serve a church mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and upon returning, begin the process of becoming a professional welder. And whereas Logan's persistent progress through the ranks of scouting to achieve this prestigious award demonstrates his determination to prepare himself for a meaningful, productive role in society. Now for, now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council, and the city of Oakley do hereby honor Logan Pope of Boy Scouts Troop Ninety in his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts, dated December tenth, twenty twenty-four. And then did we want to get the council down for the photo? Are we doing that? You did one too. All right. Yes, come on down, come on. Logan's been a part of this, um, been a part of this family for a long time, so he deserves having all of us down here. Come on, you've been a part of this family too. All right, we're gonna move right into the next one. I don't remember what the number is. One point five. All right, so this is a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Chief, can I get you to join me? All right, so whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was founded in twenty fifteen by concerns of police survivors, cops, to recognize officers across the country for the daily sacrifice they make for their communities. And whereas law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their lives on the line every day for their communities. They've answered the call of, to public service that is demanding and often unappreciated. On National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, we have the opportunity to thank them for their service and offer a token of respect. Whereas the health and safety of the citizens of Oakley is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our city, families, and communities. And whereas the city of Oakley is the proud home of dedicated police officers who put their lives on the line to keep our community safe. And whereas these officers stand as leaders and teachers, educating the community about the importance of public safety. And whereas the city of Oakley appreciates the extraordinary efforts and sacrifices made by officers and their families on a daily basis in order to protect our schools, our workplaces, roads, and homes. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council of the city of Oakley, do hereby declare January ninth, twenty twenty-five as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And I'm gonna give you a chance to say a little something, and you guys.
So I am fortunate enough to be the face of the police department, but we as a collective whole, as the police department, are very lucky to work in a community that's very supportive of us. Everybody from the community to city management, to the council, everybody's very supportive, and we are honored to be your place for, so thank you very much.
All right, so we are going to move into one point six, which is presentations by Senator Glazier's office. And I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Williams.
So while my senator may have termed out, he wanted to make sure that you got this recognition. And there's a lot of whereas in there, and my privilege about not being the mayor anymore is that I do not have to read those, but we really. But we really wanted to thank you on behalf of the California State Senate District Seven for all that you've done for Oakley. These aren't just given out to everybody. So we really appreciate all the work that you've done. So I wanted to give that to you.
Awesome, thank you very much. This is unexpected, thank you.
I also have one more I'd like to give out to our city manager Joshua McMurray. If you can come to the front, please. Again, this is not something that the senate takes lightly. So we really appreciate your service. We got great feedback from the people who work for you. So I think you're gonna get a little emotional when you read this. So I'll give you time. But I really wanna thank you for everything you've done for the city of Oakley. We've had a tremendous couple of years with you at the helm, and we really appreciate that. And the senate district recognizes the work you've done. So on behalf of the California State Senate and Senator Steve Glazer, we wanna thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we are going to move on to item number two. At this time, uh, which is public comments on non-agenda, and then non-agenda items. Publics will be heard for items not on the agenda. I do not have, oh, I do have public speaker cards. And we did receive one comment online that will be submitted to the record. There is a time limit to speak. It is three minutes. The time limit is monitored by the timer located in front of the mayor's seat. When one minute remains on the timer, it will beep once as a reminder to complete comments before your time expires. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, or other outbursts so that everyone may have an opportunity to be heard. Note that due to provisions of state law, the council may not engage in dialogue regarding comments. Staff may be directed to respond to persons making public comments. So I am going to start with Sloane Williams.
Hello there. Okay, oh yay. I would like to congratulate Shannon Shaw on now being the mayor. Good job, good job.
All right, Hadley Williams.
Hello, okay, um. I would like to congratulate my mom for being the mayor for a year and doing a good job. Though I'm sad that I cannot say my mom is the mayor anymore, but I can say that my mom's friend is the mayor, so it's fine.
Thank you. Uh, and next Sue Higgins.
Congratulations, mayor and vice mayor and council. Um, I wanted to speak today with Vae, who is our chair of the Out of Darkness Walk. We had our walk this past October. And I wanted to thank the city of Oakley, especially Tamarin Martinez. She is our park ranger who stepped up and really stood there and helped us a lot in the walk day. We had, Vae's got the numbers and the statistics. And I also wanna thank our OPD for all their public safety and helping us in the walk. And here's Vae.
Hi, my name is Vayongo Westy. You can call me Vae. As Sue mentioned, we had, we recently had our Out of the Darkness Walk here in Oakley. And thank you to Oakley PD. They were able to allow us to come, um, as a unit and walk with the audience and the participants. So I really do appreciate that. I also wanted to present some of the statistics next year and also ask for your assistance for next year's walk. The walk was going to diminish within the past four, within the past four months. And we only had four months to bring the walk back to Oakley. We've been doing this Out of the Darkness Walk for the past nine years. Next year will be our tenth anniversary. Um, and I think it'll be, it'll make a remarkable difference if we have Oakley council assisting us with this. Our event status, our goal was to raise twenty-five thousand dollars. We actually surpassed that and raised thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. We also had an amazing, um, uh, outpour from our participants. We exceeded our participants from within the last nine years. And we've had four hundred and forty, four hundred and four participants with twenty-three teams. Next year, we have yet to come up with the actual date. But we hope that you guys can promote our walk through the city website and also through the signage that you guys have out there. There's a lot of community members within Contra Costa County that did not know that we actually have this walk yearly. So again, your, your support will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not have any additional speaker cards. So I'm going to close public comment. And we are going to move on to item number three, which is council member comments. Please announce, uh, sorry. I wanna remind the council members that you have three minutes to speak, just like public comments, which will be regulated by the timer. And do I have any council members that would like to make comments? Councilmember Williams.
Um, I just want to thank everybody for being up here and serving. And, um, I know these meetings are never easy when we reorganize. So I appreciate everybody for pushing through. And I'm excited for our year ahead.
All right, seeing no others, we will move on to item four, which is our consent calendar. And do I have any items that wish to be polled?
Yes, four point one, four point three, four point four, four point five, four point eight, four point nine, and four point twelve.
And I'm. Sorry, I did need to ask if we had any public comments on the consent calendar, which I don't have any cards. But I just wanna get that procedurally out of the way. So I will close public comment on that. Are there any additional items that would like to be polled?
Um, can I pull four point seven?
And can I get a?
And I'll move the remainder of the calendar?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to move the remainder minus four point one, four point three, four point four, four point five, four point seven, four point eight, four point nine, and four point twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, passes unanimously. Four point one, Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, same objection. I won't, they're incomplete. I will not vote aye.
I move four point one as written.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Passes four one. Next item, four point three.
I've brought this up before. In fact, I think it's four times. But the resolutions, we have twelve months, of which five of those months, almost half, will be with one meeting in the month. I just, I believe we ought to meet twice during June, July, and August.
I move approval of four point three.
I have one item for discussion potentially. I would like us to consider moving, um, our reorg and having it be a special meeting and then do the business at a separate meeting. So it's not all together.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I would like next year for our December meeting, for us to actually have two meetings. One, that's a special meeting to reorganize, not on the same date as our regular business meeting.
Would that need to be brought up as a future agenda item to discuss? Or what, could we do that now?
I mean, we, we could do it either way. I mean, the, the, the way the meetings have been structured historically, the, the reorganization meeting is a special meeting. So it's not technically part of this calendar.
Okay.
So I, I think it's more of, of direction given to staff. But I think it, it would be more appropriate to bring back the item just to, um, just so we have an opportunity to look at the calendar. So it's not on the fly. And then propose something that would work, uh, that we would think would work. And then get you all to, um, give your opinion on that and approve something.
So Councilmember Williams, can I have you hold that back out? Yep.
Just a quick comment also. Councils, we can't reorganize till we receive the canvas results from the county. And with the way California counting occurs, the county technically has thirty days from election day. So technically, the county had until no, December fifth this year to report to us. So just keep that in mind if you, that, that would affect your scheduling. Cause I'm assuming you're not gonna wanna do your fourth Tuesday in December, which might fall around the Christmas holiday or a Hanukkah holiday. So just putting that out there.
And we can discuss that more when we bring it back.
If I may comment?
Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, why can't we just schedule a regular meeting in December? And the reorg, the special meeting, we can schedule at any time, is mine. If we remove the special meeting of December, we can add a special meeting when we wanna have a special meeting for reorganization and schedule the regular meeting in December. That just passes my mind, the flexibility we have.
We can, we can report back per council direction on that.
Okay, so I will second, uh, Councilmember Meadows' original motion to keep the dates as approved.
All right, so we have a first and a second.
Wait, wait.
Yes.
We're talking about moving, but we're talking about bringing something back. What do we?
So we are going to table the conversation about the second, uh, meeting for the reorg. And we are just moving forward with this item as presented in the staff report.
Which is, means we approved the special meeting and the, uh.
No, we're gonna bring back the special meeting another time. We're gonna adj, address that in future agenda items. We are just approving the staff report as of right now.
Miss, maybe Mr. Cole can help me.
So the, the item bef, the, the item has been moved and seconded to approve the schedule as indicated in four point three. There was a, essentially a side discussion about what to do in December. And that's not before you now. What staff understands is we'll bring that back to you so you can make that adjustment. But, so just to be clear, the item as presented in the staff report and the attachments for four point three are as, as, as agendized. So if you vote in favor of the item that's now pending for vote, you are voting for the meeting dates as proposed in this item, as was proposed.
It, which was just the one meeting in December?
Correct, you, you, Director, or keep saying Director. Councilmember Fuller, your objections that there are meetings with one month, um, that's, that's in the motion pending on the floor. So you, if your intention is to vote against that, you would vote no on this motion.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Passes four one. Okay, we are going to move on now to four point four. Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, Mr. Heda, I'm not.
I'll be taking all questions with consent, please.
Thank you. I, the, uh, I mentioned during the ACFR, uh, report that our parks impact fee shows, if I'm not mistaken, a little over four point, my, four point nine million dollars going to Enrico Sinquini Park. My question is, can we move that? Would it be, uh, possible to use that money in, uh, the Civic Park, Civic Center Park, since it's a park? And with that, with the nuance that since we're doing it with the Civic Center Park and we're attached to the library, that they could be used in the funds in the same, in the same manner?
Yeah, so, um, this is in regards to the AB sixteen-hundred annual report. So it shows fund balance ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, there is fund balance in that account. But since then, we've adopted our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And in that budget, we've allocated funds for two-part projects. So there's, although you're seeing a, you know, a six point two million dollar fund balance as of six thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, since then, we've budgeted about five, a little more than five million dollars of that, uh, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So there's about, uh, a million dollars or so left in that park impact fee account. Uh, that park impact fee money can be used on any city park project. Uh, the second part of your question, could that be used as part, uh, of the funding for the library and community center? And the answer there would be no, because it's not a park. Uh, but we do have public facility fees, uh, which we've already allocated, if my memory serves me correct, five hundred thousand dollars. That, that fee account is not as robust as some of the others. So there's limited funding there. Uh, but there is an allocation already. And if more funding, uh, is available at the time, the council moves, decides to move forward with a decision on the project, uh, we would be able to allocate, uh, at that time as well.
But let me rephrase my question then. During the budgeting process, if we made a decision, uh, that we wanted the four point nine million to go to the Civic Center Park instead of Enrico Sinquini Park, when we were budgeting, would that have been possible?
No, no, it's a park. Because it's, it's coming from a park impact fee. These are restricted funds. So they can only be used on either the acquisition or the construction of a new park. We have a public facilities fee that we also collect. And that could be used, uh, for the library and other public facilities, actual structures.
And this one we're accepting, right? Adopt a resolution? Consider a resolution?
Ex, uh, consider a resolution, accepting the five-year development impact fee report.
Yes, accepting. I'll move acceptance.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. All right, um, item four point five. Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, is there any affordable housing in that development, this plant?
Not, not that I'm aware of. It was approved as a, a market rate development.
Pardon me?
It was approved as a market rate development.
Did we approve the market rate or did the planning commission?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to report back on you, on that.
I believe, wasn't this entitled, um, in two thousand and seven?
It was.
So.
Yeah, we approved it.
City council.
Us and previous councils.
Yeah, it would be a city council.
Would have been a city council action.
I'm not debating that. I'm debating whether we approved it at market rate. And that's, I still don't think that question's answered. So I will vote no.
Yeah, on February twelfth, two thousand and seven, the city council adopted resolution eighteen oh seven approving the project vesting tentative map for Brownstone subdivision. So it says the city council adopted the resolution to approve this tentative map. This is just the subdivision improvement.
I'm looking for the words market rate. And that's what I'm hearing is market rate. I'm not sure if that's what we approved, market rate. I just.
It's, it's not, it's not an affordable development. It's, it is not a, an affordable development. These are single-family, for-sale homes.
Then I will vote no.
Can, can we get a point of clarification about what this resolution is approving? Is this resolution approving the, the allowance of these units? Or is this requiring the developer to make the subdivision improvements rather than circumvent the subdivision?
I'll be happy to answer. This is just, the entitlement process is long over. So the council's ability to shape the entitlements has expired a long time ago. All this is doing is setting forth the terms by which the developer can receive approval of its final map in exchange for doing all of the things in its map, all the subdivision improvements, the public infrastructure and other things that we require of all developments. So you're well beyond any ability to condition or impose new requirements for the subdivision.
So a no vote on this would only, um, allow the developer to circumvent their requirements, is that correct?
Well, a no vote would actually hold up the development because the only way we can final the map without the improvements being completed is if we have a binding agreement with the developer to complete those agreements. And if, or an improvement. So if we don't have that, we can't final the map. But, so. But, so the answer is yes, you're, 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 you'd be hurting the developer and potentially interfering with their rights.
Would that open us up to litigation?
Yes, it absolutely would.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
I'll move approval of this item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions, passes four one. Item four point seven, Councilmember Williams.
So I won't take a long time on this, I just know that I had parts of this presented to us, and I think it's an exciting project that we're able to be part of, so I was just hoping you could give a quick overview for those who are watching at home of what this funding project actually means to the city of Oakley.
Yeah, sure, so the team worked really hard to secure some grant funding, then there is a, a small city match, but essentially, it's going to upgrade all the signals that are along Main Street and modernize those, those are, those are some of the oldest signals we have. For those that, that don't know, Main Street used to be Highway four, and a lot of the, the signals that exist on, on that section of that roadway are, are old and antiquated, and this will bring up the, the signals to current technology, modernize those, and allow us to time those to improve the efficiencies with circulation along Main Street.
So in theory, this can get rid of some of the pain points that we have, that we hear about on Main Street, correct?
Potentially, yes.
Great, thank you. With that, I will move approval of this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes unanimously. All right, item four point eight, Councilmember Fuller?
Yes, I can combine four point eight and four point nine, if the council would allow me. I just have the same question for both of them, whether we met and conferred with our workers before we put this out, that made a decision to put it out for contract.
I, I can answer the question in respect to both four point eight and four point nine, these are standard contracts that we've, we've had in place for years, and we are continuing with that practice of ensuring that we supplement both the city and what we're able to do operationally with contract work to ensure our operations are what is needed to meet the city's needs.
And I have the same answer, it's time for a change, I'll vote no on both of them.
I have a question for the Jet Mulch, does the city have the facilities to make these playground chips, if one of our staff members wanted to do this?
No, we, we don't have the facility, nor do we have the equipment to do that.
Thank you.
I move approval of four point eight and four point nine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions, items four point eight and four point nine, pass four one. And let's move on, four point twelve, Councilmember Fuller?
Yes. Yes, just a question, where did we come up with the name Riverine Park? I've never, I have not heard of the name Riverine before, not that it matters, but I'm just curious how we came up with it.
I, I wasn't involved in that, if Mr. Rohani wants to, he's, he's letting me know it was the developer that submitted the three names, and that, that really is in line with our park naming policy, we get, we get the developer to submit names, and they gave us three, and we selected what we felt was the best name.
All right, well, thank you, I'll move the item for approval.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes unanimously. Okay, we are going to move on to five point one, which is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving a determination to vacate the public roadway, public roadway right-of-way for Old Naroli Road between Naroli Road and Empire Avenue, located along the Westerly boundary of APN zero five three, zero seven one, zero four six. Presented by Kevin Rohani, oh, there you are, sorry.
Mayor Shaw, Vice Mayor Henderson, members of the council, I'm pleased to present you this report. Back in April two thousand eight, about fifteen, sixteen years ago, the city council at that time approved the vesting tentative and development plan by the LSK Development Company to develop what is referred to as the Empire Station, this is a property at the southwest corner of Empire and Naroli Road, kind of across from the current Diamond Hills Sports Complex. As a part of development back then, Condition eighty-nine was for the developer to apply for abandonment of the exist, extra right-of-way that used to be the old Naroli Road. Before Magnolia Park subdivision was built, Diamond Hills, all of that, then Naroli was much closer to right-of, to the railroad tracks, so over the years, over the past fifteen, sixteen years that you've seen, Naroli has been reconstructed, Magnolia Park, Empire has been substantial improvements at that area. So over these years, developer has worked with the various utility companies to remove and abandon the right-aways that was on that, it's a sliver of land, as you've seen in Exhibit, just hugs the railroad, railroad tracks. Now the developer, after a number of years, those tasks has been completed, has requested that the city start the abandonment process for that extra right-of-way per Condition of Approval eighty-nine. This kind of sliver of land, as you've seen in Exhibit, for us, we've been maintained over the years, and has, has been a kind of a sore spot, is a major point of dumping, assortment of trash, debris, homeless encampment, which uses our resources to continuous cleaning, and a very painful process, needless to say. So this opportunity to not only fulfill the condition, but also give this land to a developer saves us the maintenance costs to constantly have to go there and clean up that area. This item was brought to the planning commission at the November nineteenth meeting, which they approved and forwarded it to the city council at a public hearing tonight. We have provided public notification for the hearing, staff has not received any comments on this item, and staff recommends the city council approve, adopt a resolution making the right-of-way of Old Naroli Road as shown on Exhibit A. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the city council for staff? All right, we are going to open the public hearing, I do not have any speaker cards, do we have an opponent or proponent on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and call for deliberation of the council. Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move approval of item five point one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, item six point two, since we already did six point one, is adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty-five city council committee appointment lists. Kim Slodgrass, city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. Each year after the city council reorganized, we ask that you review the city council appointment list for the upcoming year to decide which committees each council member should serve. The draft list for twenty twenty-five is attached to the staff report, and staff is, staff recommends city council review and discuss the list and adopt a resolution approving the final list.
All right, do I have any questions from, from the council? Any public comment on this item?
Well, do you want council members?
Yes, I'm sorry, you want questions? Yes.
Yes, can we go down and name which is which? I'm assuming Vice Mayor is, is, Mr. Henderson, but there's council one, two, and three. Council one, Councilmember one, please stand.
Councilmember Fuller, I believe that's what is before the council to consider. So you would, you would need to, if, if that lineup works for the three of you, then, you know, Mayor Shaw would take the mayor duties, Vice Mayor Henderson would take the vice mayor duties, that leaves three of you, so one of you would be assigned council member one duties, two duties, then three duties, or if you feel a different allocation for one, two, and three, you can mix those around.
It'd be kind of nice to know who's voting what, especially when it involves yourself, but I'll be glad to take it out, apparently the council doesn't have any confidence in my ability to work in such environments, so I'll just eliminate, you can eliminate one council member, I'll just forfeit all the positions.
All right, so I am going to open this up to public comment, I have no speaker cards on this item, nobody here to speak, so I will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion.
So in that case, I have a proposed list then. Mayor would be Cal Cities East Bay Division voting, Contra Costa County Mayor's Conference, the East County Mayors and City Managers Conference, or working group, Parks Subcommittee, Oakley, the, the Subcommittee working with the schools, the school liaison, Contra Costa Fire Protection District Liaison, Tri Delta Transit, and MCE Board Alternate then. Vice Mayor, I have Contra Costa Mayor's Conference Alternate, the East County Mayors and City Managers Conference Alternate, Ironhouse Sanitary District Liaison, Habitat Conference, Conserva-ation Committee, HCP Conservancy, Board of Green Empowerment Zone, and then I guess Add Diablo Water District. For Councilmember Williams, East Bay Leadership Council, Oakley Inter-Agency Subcommittee, the Public Schools Liaison, Tri Delta Transit, Cal Cities East Bay Division Alternate, and A-Bag voting member. For myself, MCE, Trans Plan, Equifa, and Highway Four Bypass Authority, Ad Hoc Parks Subcommittee, and A-Bag Alternate. And I make that as a motion.
Any read those back, please?
Did, does staff get it? Mayor, Cal Cities East Bay Division voting, the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference, East County Mayors and City Managers Quarterly Meeting, Parks Subcommittee, Schools Subcommittee, Contra Costa Fire Protection Liaison, Tri Delta Transit, and MCE Board Alternate. Vice Mayor, Contra Costa Mayor's Conference Alternate, the, the East County Mayors and City Managers Quarterly Meeting Alternate, Ironhouse Sanitary District Liaison, Habitat Conservation Plan, Executive Committee, HCP Conservancy, Board of Green Empowerment Zone, Diablo Water District, Councilmember Williams, A-Bag voting member, East Bay Leadership Council, Oakley School Liaison, Tri Delta Transit, Cal Cities East Bay Division Alternate. And myself, MCE, Trans Plan, Equifa, East County Fee and Finance Authority, and State Route Four Bypass, Parks Subcommittee, and A-Bag Alternate.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to seven point one, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Got a few things to note, first, I wanted to thank the city staff for putting on a tremendous tree lighting event last Thursday night, the amount of work and effort that goes into that is massive, and many departments and many of the staff participated in the event, which helped bring such a fantastic evening to this community. So wanted to, to highlight that, and also say, we had Santa here last Sunday evening, and he will be back next on the twenty-second of this month from four to eight PM with pictures, and that is all free to the community here. Then I wanted to give notice of our holiday closure, this is something that we've done for many years, well over a decade, we will be closing at twelve PM on December nineteenth, and we reopen on January sixth. Although we are closed to the public, for most of our services, the police department is always open, the building division will be open with their permit center and for building inspections, along with engineering inspections, and limited code enforcement services will be available during that time. Also wanted to announce to the public that we will be having new hours of operation effective January sixth when we reopen, so that doesn't change the fact that we are closed the first and third Friday of every month, but from January sixth on, in an effort to provide better customer service, we will be opening our development services counter at seven thirty AM and then closing at four PM, Monday through Thursday, Fridays by appointment. The city hall lobby will be open from eight thirty AM to five PM, the PD will also be open from eight thirty AM to five PM, and our recreation department is open eight to six, Monday through Thursday, and eight to five on Fridays. And lastly, if you all have noticed, we have two city clerks seated on the other side of the, the room, which is not common, and, and that's because the city clerk, one of the city clerks, Libby Vrionas, is retiring at the end of next week, and I don't want to do anything that's going to embarrass her or bring her up to the center of the room, but I would like the record to reflect that she has exemplified public service over her sixteen-plus years working for the city. I've had the opportunity to work with Libby for the entirety of my career here, sixteen-plus years at the city, and we don't have, we're such a young city, as we talked about the twenty-fifth anniversary, we, we haven't seen a lot of retirements. So this is a, a special moment for the city, but an even more special moment for Libby, and I just want to congratulate you for everything you've accomplished in your career. I know you got a lot of things you want to do after this, but your time here will always be remembered, and you're always considered part of the team, and you've also worked very close with our city attorney, Derek Cole, and I know he has some words to say to you as well.
I do. It's been fifteen years, Libby, and I have enjoyed this thoroughly. The dirty secret, which is probably not so much a secret, is that you really are the city attorney, you do, you do the work of a city attorney, and I say that in all sincerity, the work product that Libby prepares is not just the stuff you see as a city clerk, but she does basically legal work of any city attorney, and she does it exceptionally, a lot of the things maybe the council doesn't see, there are some legal filings, but there are drafting of ordinances, notices, and other things, and you just, it, the work is exemplary, it is outstanding, it is very capable work of a public servant, it's the work of a lawyer, and I can't tell you how much I'm going to miss working with you, but there's always, I think, that, that the part of being sad that someone is leaving is also the happiness that you're, you're going to be doing. that you're going to be doing something that you, the next chapter of your life, the metaphorical proverbial chapter of your life. And so I'm very happy. I know Elizabeth wanted to convey the exact same thing. So I am working, looking forward to working with Kim, and I'm confident Kim will be a fantastic city clerk. But I am sad to see you go, but I'm also very happy for you personally.
And our city clerk, moving forward, will be Kim Snodgrass. She was promoted early last month. And Libby has just been more than gracious in this transition, and Kim is more than well-prepared to take on this new role. With that said, the November business license update is attached to your agenda. And lastly, there is an update from the Oaks Apartments that is attached, and Oak Johnson is here for that report.
Thank you, City Council. And before I start with the general presentation, Maishaw, I would like to address some of the issues from the last meeting that came up. Wanted to address those and get those noted for you. We went back and re-watched the video to make sure that we captured them all. There was a question regarding the locks on three specific buildings. We very quickly walked with a locksmith to be able to provide a proposal for new locking mechanisms, new ways to make the doors more effective. Unfortunately, we've not received his proposal. He is, for lack of a better way to say it, ghosting us now. So we have, we will be shifting gears and re-walking the buildings with new locksmiths, which was unfortunate because he had some good ideas for us. There was a question regarding the vehicle gates. Turns out, we were able to get them operating, and then the transformer, we believe, busted in the door king software, so that is scheduled to be fixed tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Thursday. And the pedestrian gate was vandalized. We are trying to repair the latch mechanisms. The trash areas, we have ordered a new pressure washer to be able to provide regular monthly recurring pressure washing in each one of the trash areas to be able to keep those clean. We opted to bring that in-house rather than hire an outside vendor to do some pressure washing duties, and we'll be able to leverage the equipment. There are still some homeless that have come into the community. We've been encouraging the community members and our staff, of course, to reach out to the Police Department whenever they're seen. We'd rather not have our residents reaching out and trying to resolve the issue with the homeless themselves. So that relationship with the Police Department is one that is beginning, hopefully, to mature with our new Regional Property Manager having communicated with the Chief of Police. There was a request regarding how do they get video surveillance when it's requested. We, Reyna is going through training to be able to, Reyna, the Regional Property Manager, I'm sorry, going through training to be able to pull those down. We still have to work out where we're allowed to provide residents that specific video footage. It's one thing if it's requested by the police, if it's another thing if it's needed for evidence, say, in a court case. But just to, we want to be very careful of all the residents' privacies in that issue. And we're looking into additional signage for you, or for the, in the buildings related to the security footage. The question regarding the Police Department presence on the back of the buildings. So again, we've been interacting with the Chief of Police on various strategies to reduce traffic from outside individuals within the community. That'll be an ongoing issue that is something that we have to continue to address for some time. There was a question about standing water by bench in Building sixty-five. We were able to identify a leak in irrigation valve, and so that was replaced. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Question regarding staff uniforms. We have now received all the uniforms, so all of the maintenance team will be dressed in uniforms and to confirm that anytime there is a vendor who is visiting an occupied unit, they will be accompanied by a staff member. Specific question about Building eighty-one trash area. That is, we reviewed that actually today. Again, there is an opportunity to open up an additional door we think will be helpful. But in our individual meetings with the residents of Building eighty-one, this particular issue is not brought up to our attention. The Building sixty-five window, we looked at this again because the original issue was related to moisture coming in through the window. And as a reminder to the City Council, this specific window is one that was added after construction in order to help prevent wind from slamming the fire door shut in the hallways. It was originally designed to be an open breezeway. The window itself, there was some leaking issues, so we opened up the area around the window, and it appears that those have been resolved. So we're not sure if window replacement is actually needed anymore. So we're going to reach back out to the City Planning Department and the permit group. If we can save the seven thousand dollars to replace the window, we think that money could be better spent on the residents. After the last couple of rains, there's been no water intrusion in the area. If there is water intrusion in the area, it's just important to note that that area was originally designed as an exterior area. There's a floor drain right there inside the window. So, and there's a functioning window in there now, so want to let you know that. The fire trucks, there have not been any fires. The one in particular that you had asked about, there was a resident issue that called nine-one-one, and as a result, the Fire Department came out. It was not related to a fire. And those were the items from the, from your, from the end of the last meeting, so thank you. And then we provided a year-end update. Point it down. The down arrow. There we go. Sorry. So the update we included, the onsite contact information, we think that continues to be important. Would like to note that that has been, that staff, again, with the addition of Reyna, who joined us in November, has been very stable over the last year, which is not something that we could be said for years prior. Would like to touch on Resident Services. And this is just an example of the programming that was completed in two thousand and twenty-four. We have been able to tally up the results, and in two thousand and twenty-four, so far, we have interacted three thou, with, we've documented Resident Service interactions three thousand one hundred and nine times through the month of November. So that doesn't include the month of December. That's an average of two hundred and eighty-two individual interactions with residents. Many of those are the same resident multiple times. But I think that that's worth noting, that that is the level of involvement that we have with our community. We've been able to connect on some new initiatives for our residents. Most recently, an adopt a senior program. Many thanks to Councilmember Williams, who has worked with our community on that. Some of the big events this year that were just fun in nature was a summer kickoff event where we had more than one hundred and twenty-five residents that participated in the barbecue. And I think that's important because it highlights the community, right? And that's what we're trying to build there. It's not just, it is where folks can come and be involved with each other. The property staff participated in the city's annual Heart of Oakley Festival. We are very excited to do that. We'll plan on doing that in the future as the community staff becomes ingrained with the community at large. And a very important aspect of the Resident Services is recognizing the individual needs and assisting the residents on a one-on-one basis with day-to-day needs and assistance with rent, transportation, coordination with free services which might be available to seniors, aging in place, childcare needs, tutoring, and other social services that don't necessarily show up on that calendar. So I think that's important to note as well. We have focused this year on communication with the residents. In particular, we have, we've continued to use both email and print to communicate with our residents and other technology services, including an active building program, which allows us to communicate directly from an app on our phone with the residents. We've tried many different meetings throughout the year with the residents, whether those were large group meetings or small meetings. After the last City Council meeting, we took your advice, and we held individual meetings with each of the buildings. We were able to see an increase in total participation of residents from fifteen residents to thirty-four. And while thirty-four residents out of the five hundred and nine apartments may not seem like a lot, it more than doubled the participation. We're going to continue with that model going into two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, and we will do that throughout the year to see that continue to improve, hopefully, those numbers. We've also received some requests from seniors to increase paper communication. So we'll pivot in some areas that we may not have provided that paper communication in the past. We're also encouraging our residents to communicate directly with the Police Department for security issues and not rely on waiting until the next day or waiting until they run into a City Council member in the general public. And then finally, we are going to begin in January, monthly resident surveys, where we'll be petitioning feedback on specific issues from our residents on a monthly basis. On property operations, would like to just highlight that during the year, we had one hundred and nine move-outs and one hundred and five move-ins. While that may seem like a lot, on a community the size of ours, it's about a twenty percent turnover rate, which isn't really that bad in an affordable housing community that includes family development. Senior developments will typically have lower turnover than family. So on a blended community such as ours, it's, we think that that's a reasonable amount. We're also working within the community in ways that we weren't in previous years. And by that, I mean that our staff is reaching out to community businesses throughout the city of Oakley and the neighboring communities to be able to talk to them about apartments that we may have available, but also services that they may have available that our residents would benefit from. So we're reaching out to fifteen businesses a week. In two thousand and twenty-four, we had several customer service enhancements, including monthly meetings with the residents. I talked about how we shifted that just here in December. We've maintained the proper level of staffing and worked to get the right level of staffing. We've elevated the two leadership positions on the community, and we are already seeing dividends paying there. And we've also strengthened the use of technology to allow residents to report and track their maintenance requests from their phone or their computer if they like. They can always come into the office. Our maintenance highlights. We identified the key items that we felt were most significant during the year. Significant sidewalk repairs and improvements, clubroom freshenings in five of the buildings. Most of those were the senior communities where they get the most use. And that included new flooring, painting, and furniture. New landscape cleaning and trash services to allow us to provide better services to our residents. We did, we got a new trash compactor. I'm not sure if you've seen the trash compactor in use, but with five hundred apartments, it gets a lot of use. So having a brand-new trash compactor has been significant. Significant tree trimming and removal of dead trees, hydrojetting of freshwater and wastewater lines, dryer vent cleaning to hopefully address some of the concerns regarding the laundry machines, significant roof repairs, common area flooring replacements, and a significant completion effort for past due service requests. And like to specifically highlight the service requests that in two thousand and twenty-four to date, and the disparity between, just in the last week, between the number of requests that have been received and those that have been completed has continued to grow. But over twenty-three hundred service requests have now been completed, and less than two thousand new service requests have come in. So that is the effort that the team has been making along the way. In closing, I appreciate all of the efforts of the City Council and the city staff to improve the lives of the residents of the Oaks. Holding us accountable isn't a bad thing. We've been committed to the community, and we believe that that commitment shows when you visit the community. It's not perfect. It's always going to be a work in progress, but we think we've made significant improvements. I agree with some of the City Council members at the last meeting that this setting may not be the appropriate venue for residents or management to communicate with each other. Based on the updates I've provided, I believe that we are providing opportunities for those residents at the community. We're seeing that interaction between the staff and the residents. And while we will always be available to the City Council and the city staff, I would ask the City Council whether or not they believe this is a continued good use of their time and whether or not we need to continue to provide monthly updates in this settings. Thank you.
All right, anyone but me have questions or comments?
Public comment?
Yep, aye. Oh, yes, we, public comment. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak? All right, then I will close public comment, and Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, and going through the audit, I saw that we have, we're carrying a debt for a little over five point two million dollars on Carol Lane. Can you, can that be explained? And is there a performance clause in there since it was for affordable, low-income housing? What contains in the contract? I've read it once, but like to know. And I think it's still, my, the audit said five point two million dollar on Carol Lane debt.
I don't have the details. I mean, unless Oak does and wants to speak to those. But I don't have the details off the top of my head, but what we could do is bring back information at the next council meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We could bring back information at the next council meeting. I wouldn't want to speak out of line, and I don't have those details. I haven't read that agreement for probably a decade, so it wouldn't be fair to give you information or details that are inaccurate. So I'd rather, I'd rather take the time and prepare something for you, if that's the desire.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Williams?
I just want to give some positive feedback. I know lots of times, especially me, I, you know, call out the things that people have told me, and I've, I have to thank Reyna. I've heard very good things. You mentioned that we have a Santa to a senior program that we kicked off, and Reyna's been invaluable. And I think we're going to probably benefit fifty-five seniors there when all is said and done. I think almost everybody's been adopted. I did a check, and we've got most of the tags done. So I really appreciate the help and collaboration, and I've heard really, you know, people are noticing a difference. So I think as much as, especially I, have beat you all up over this time here, I think it's important to acknowledge that there is significant improvement. And I was one of the people who was in support of potentially this isn't the correct venue for this any longer. I think just to give people reassurances, I would just like to also state that we would have the mechanism to always call back up and create another Subcommittee if we were seeing standards sort of slip. But I don't know that this facilitates a great discussion where it needs to happen, right? And we don't interfere with any other tenant landlord disputes anyplace else in the city. So I think we need to ensure that we're giving people the tools, which it sounds like you guys are directing people to the right places, and so. But I also want people who are watching this video to know that that's not a, we're wiping our hands. We would always have the authority to call anything up, but I think this doesn't facilitate the discussions that need to be happening internally. So that's my thought on it.
Councilmember Meadows?
I would agree with that. I mean, there's recourse if needed. Citizens can reach out, or the tenants can reach out to Code Enforcement, Building Department, other city officials, us. So I would agree, it's time it could be finished. But, oh, thank you for coming, and I think you have made, in basically a year, tremendous progress. So.
Thank you. Thank you both.
And, I mean, you're getting the service tickets closed, and you guys made a big effort there, and that's important. You gotta keep on it, but.
Of course.
But, yeah. So thank you.
I would like to thank you for bringing back the information. I know I rambled a lot last meeting. But it was a lot of information I wanted to get out, and I'm glad that some of those were helpful. And I also would like to comment that I have heard nothing since that meeting but great comments about the new Regional Property Manager, Reyna. So even from those tenants that were the loudest to have a negative thing to say. And so I think that speaks volumes. Nobody has reached out to me since the last meeting, and that is amazing because this is your job, not mine, you know, to manage those tenants. I have one hundred and ten of my own. So I am in agreement. I think that it's time that we, you know, sever this monthly date we have with you and, you know, look forward to continuing to see your progress as long as the rest of the council agrees. I don't know that we would need to vote on it. We just kind of made this an item. We closed the Ad Hoc Committee, but I think we can just give direction to end that, which I'm, so I think three of us so far have been for that. But yeah, good work. I hope it continues, and I know it's hard. I do it. So I look forward to seeing more positive comments or hearing more positive comments. And I look forward to the collaboration that we do with. And I look forward to the collaboration that we do with you guys, and I appreciate your efforts coming to participate in our city events, and we talked about that, so I think it's important to be a part of the community, and I see that you guys are doing that, so thank you.
Thank you.
But don't move Raina and Bill just because they're doing a great job to another project.
No, that won't be happening.
All right, and so if there's nothing else, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to council reports. Is there anyone that would like to, yes, council member Fuller?
Yes, I sent the climate action plan workshop, and that was productive, thank you. I also mentioned Mr. Strello when I was going through the audit report. Community development was the one part of the city that had money left over after working. I'm not quite sure why, it was about $1.2 million, but thank you. The other one is, I did go to Congressman Salty, or Salty in Walnut Creek on veterans on his town hall, and there was a lot of good information about veterans. There is, we have not done well with veterans, period. He brought up, and I agree with him, he brought up that there is, regarding ceremonies, especially Veterans Day and Memorial Day, that they just aren't what they should be. And he attributed that to, in other words, they're ticky-tacky, and I've talked to Mr. McMurray about it, but, about ours, but that this lot has to do with that, there are, there, since the draft was put aside and the career military came about, that the number of veterans, people just don't know about veterans. If you ask how many people were killed at Okinawa, which was strategic to allowing Inola Gay to leave Guam and deliver a package to Nagasaki during World War II, there were 14,000-plus men that died on Okinawa, and over 49,500. That was just one battle in, in World War II. And we don't, when we go to Memorial Day, there's a lot of people that just, well, we need to remember the veterans, but the impact's missing. I will bring it up more, he's going to bring it up more, and we'll see how it goes as we continue.
Council member Meadows?
Since our last meeting, I attended CCTA board meeting, MCE board meeting. I attended the mayor's conference last Thursday, that's why I wasn't at the tree lighting, but I had, I'm on the executive committee for the mayor's conference for this last year, and we had one meeting, and it was last week. And then I didn't get to attend the tree lighting, I've seen video, I've seen, I see the park every day, and it looks, it looks phenomenal, so staff has done a great job. I can barely hear the music, though. And then I'd like to say thank you to Libby, done great work, it's good working with you. Thank you for everything you've done, Libby.
Vice Mayor Henderson?
Since our last meeting, I attended Iron House Sanitation District's meeting, the senior subcommittee, senior center subcommittee meeting, which has done some great work, and I think after the first of the year, it'll be coming to council to see the, what staff has put together for staff moving forward with taking some of those city services on. Also attended the climate workshop. The tree lighting was phenomenal, as everybody else has said, and Friday night bites. And that concludes my report.
Council member Williams?
Okay, went to a lot. We went to the mayor's conference where we got an update on the Concord Naval Weapons Station project. That building is being done by Brookfield Properties. They were selected in 2023. The build-out will take approximately 35 years. The project is 2,300 acres. The entitlement process is expected to take three years, and the Navy does need that time to clean up the area and making sure it's environmentally sound, but it is projected to bring 12,722 homes. 25% of those will be affordable. That will be approximately 33,784 new residents. It will also include five schools plus a college, so it was really interesting to hear. They unfortunately have not interacted with any local public transit, so that's sort of a miss, but they are conducting workshops over the next few years to see what is needed. East Bay Regional Park District had recreation as conservation becoming a key topic, so lots of East Bay Regional Park land is turning to just green space, and they're considering that recreation so that they can conserve land or conserve, return the habitat, basically. Lafco, as of this meeting, Confire was going to possibly absorb Rodeo and Hercules Fire Department, which I believe has now gone through. Lafco approved it. We also went to the, oh, sorry, MCE is now 99.9% fossil fuel-free, so I know we have a very important member of our audience who helped to bring MCE to Oakley, so I'd like to thank our former mayor, Sue Higgins, for having that become a possibility for us, because that's a really impressive statistic. Cal Cities is going to be sending out info on Prop IV, so that cities have info on the buckets of money that will be eligible for climate bonds, so important as we're getting to our climate action planning. And there was a new laws webinar that happened December 3rd, also through Cal Cities, and they just updated all of the, what it means to cities, basically. I did attend the City of Oakley Action Plan Workshop One. Our strategy and plan development will be from November 24th to January, November of '24 to January of '25. The draft plan will be out February 2025. Public workshop number two will be February 2025 with a public comment period, and the final plan is set to be presented to us April 2025. Where we thought there could be some room for improvements is for our municipal GHG emissions are 88% from vehicles, 7% electricity, 5% natural gas. Community-wide, our GHG emissions are 82.4% from vehicles, very little due, from electricity due to MCE, and then natural gas in residential buildings is 16.86%, whereas natural gas in commercial buildings is only 0.56%. I got to attend a fentanyl awareness event that was held at Heritage featuring our very own now mayor. I went to the Oakley Unified Master Plan Meeting. It's a plan for the future of OUESD due to population growth and increased enrollment. They will be having town halls, online surveys, department interviews. I do encourage everybody to look for those things. Unfortunately, their second town hall was tonight. There's very limited dates in December that they can do things, so unfortunately, their second town hall was tonight, but I do encourage everybody to listen to those or do the surveys. I was one of the only people to bring up our road circulation and maybe readdressing how pickups and drop-offs happen, which is something that impacts everybody, even if you don't have a child at a school, so I just encourage people to look for those. I did get to attend the swearing-in of our new state senator, Chris Cabaldam. I went to the Oakley Tree Lighting, which everybody's talked about, but it was incredible, and I also just have to thank our city staff for everything. Dave Travers, who did our carriage rides, said that he's never had a city that's functioned better. He does these carriage rides for lots of different cities and municipalities, and he specifically wanted to call out Public Works. He specifically wanted to call out our police department, so I just think it's important that you hear that. I mean, this is somebody who does this all the time, and so he has, he was very impressed with how professional it all was, and I think that was probably our busiest one that I've seen, and I've heard nothing but great things from everybody. It was an amazing, an amazing time, and I can't wait for us to top it next year. I also went to the Antioch Keys to the City presentation and the East Bay Regional Parks District Holiday Celebration, and I think that was probably everything, but I might have missed one.
All right, I attended with council member Williams the mayor's conference in Concord for November. I did the Florida Oakley Crab Feed, which was actually great. I did go to the Oakley Climate Action Plan Meeting. I had to leave a little bit early. My husband was hungry, so the library subcommittee meeting. We are closing out the time for our fundraising. We still have some donors and some grant applications that we're waiting to hear back on, so hopefully we will have some solid numbers soon. We did have the senior, the senior club committee meeting at the rec center, was great to show them the space, really get some ideas of what that's going to look like. I'm excited about what programming can look like and excited to see that brought back to all of us. The fentanyl awareness presentation on the 21st was actually at Freedom High School, not Heritage, but I did speak. For those that don't know, I lost my brother five years ago to a fentanyl overdose and a very close family friend just about a year and a half ago, and so I've been speaking at the schools every time that they ask, and we are actually going to be hosting an awareness event at City Hall on December 18th. I'd be happy, if Josh could send that information out, that would be great. I would love for you all to attend, it's very important. The Oakley Tree Lighting was amazing. I snuck in right at the start and snuck out right at the end. I had some company in town, but I was so happy to attend that. I did go to Senator Glazier's farewell party, and that was very well-attended. It was a lot of people that he's worked with over the years, so I was happy to represent Oakley there. I also attended the Antioch Keys to the City presentation, I wasn't going to mention that, but since council member Williams did, and then the East Bay Regional Park 90th Anniversary Holiday Into the Year Celebration Party. I'd also like to mention that I've been reappointed to the Cal City Policy Committee for Public Safety, and while Josh will not embarrass Libby, I would like to, after Future Agenda Items, close this meeting in Libby's honor. Thank you for your amazing years of service, and while we look forward to Kim and working with you, Libby, you are irreplaceable, so. And with that, I will move to item 7.2, which is Future Agenda Items. Do I have any Future Agenda Items?
Do I need to bring up that item, or did we give enough direction?
I think we have enough direction to bring something back, yeah.
Great, thank you.
What's that? What are we bringing back?
That item I discussed earlier about potentially separating.
I, Mr. Mc, I like the way Mr. McMurray summarized it. What are we bringing back?
It wasn't my ask, but it was an item to separate the day in which the reorganization meeting falls on versus the regular meeting for the city council in the month of December.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other Future Agenda Items, we have no work sessions, and number nine closed sessions, we have no closed sessions, so item 10 is adjournment. With there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming and staying with us.